Six thirty?
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the school committee meeting for Wednesday, March sixth. If we could all stand for the pledge allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Please remain standing.
Good evening, everyone. We have two memorians tonight. If you could keep in your thoughts and prayers the following individuals who were Quincy Public School employees. The first is Linda Thompson. She was with the Quincy Public Schools for fifteen years in the food services department as a cafeteria helper and later a cook at North Quincy High School. And next is Michael McCarron. He was a teacher for thirty-five years, first at the John Hancock Elementary School, then later at the Lincoln Hancock Community School and Broad Meadows Middle School. Again, if you could keep these individuals and their families in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you.
Superintendent, call the roll.
Mr. Begoli.
Present.
Mrs. Cahill.
Present.
Mr. Gattro.
Present.
Mrs. Hugo Bleach.
Mrs. Lebo.
Mrs. Perdiros.
Present.
Mayor Koch.
Present.
And North Quincy High School student representative, Amy Tan.
So prior to the meeting, we'll read the open meeting statement. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. We have open forum, which is an op- opportu- oh, oh, first, sorry. First, we're going to do approval of the minutes from our regular meeting minutes of February seventh, 2024. Motion to approve, second by Mayor Koch. All in favor?
All right.
Next, we have the open forum, an opportunity for community input regarding the Quincy Public Schools. Community in this context is defined as a resident of the city of Quincy, a parent of a student who attends the Quincy Public Schools, or an employee of the Quincy Public Schools. Non-community persons not permitted to speak at open forum may submit written statements to the school committee. After giving his or her name and address, each speaker may make a presentation of no more than four minutes to the school committee. An individual may not exchange their time or yield to others. Interested parties may also submit written statements to qscopenforum@quincypublicschools.com. Is there anyone here who would like to participate in the open forum? None? And Mrs. Owens, do we have any emails?
We do not have any emails tonight.
Okay, so no emails tonight. We're going to take out of order in our agenda tonight. Before the superintendent's report, we'd like to do the CVTE presentations. Mr. Sagala.
Thank you, Vice Chair Cahill, and good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. Tonight, we celebrate and honor Quincy's 2024 Outstanding Vocational Technical Student of the Year. You'll also hear from four other amazing students who were also nominated for this distinct award. These students not only represent the thirteen-hundred-plus vocational students in our district, but they represent the very best of career vocational education in Quincy. And we're certainly very, very proud of each of them. Special thanks to our high school principals, Dan Gilbert, North Quincy High School, Keith Ford, Quincy High School, and our CVT department chairs, Marian Collins at North Quincy High and Rebecca McGinnis at Quincy High. Special thanks also to our thirty-five vocational educators, as well as the folks joining us this evening. Erin Egan from North Quincy High School, she's healthcare technology. Christine L, Early Education and Care, Quincy High School. Brendan Ryan, Film and Television Production, Quincy High. Unfortunately, he cannot be here this evening. Coach Charles Hanifid, Plumbing Technology, Quincy High School. And Robin Kaplan, Fashion Technology, Quincy High School. So at this time, without further ado, our first presenter is Kaitlin Sampson.
Good evening. My name's Kaitlin Sampson, and I'm currently a senior at Quincy High School. I'm an alumni of Lincoln Hancock Elementary and Southwest Middle School. My career major is early education and care. I chose this major because I always had a love for children. I've always loved playing and engaging with them, and knew I possibly wanted to pursue this in my career. Throughout early ed, here are the sum of the skills I've obtained. Body mechanics, stages of development, lesson planning, learning styles, guidance techniques, health and safety, technology, leadership, positive communication, public speaking, and entrepreneurship. By the time I graduate in June, here are some of the certifications and credentials I will earn. CPR and first aid, strong start, mandated reporting, Career Safe, my EEC license, and occupational proficiency in early education and care. Currently, I'm deciding between four colleges, UMass Amherst, U Maryland, Westfield State, and UConn, where I'll be majoring in business and education. Next, I would like to present to you my project. So what I chose to do is about the four domains of development. What I did is a snowball activity. At the end of the tables, I have created lesson plans that I made along with some finished activities. What I did is here how I set it up in my first grade classroom at Lincoln Hancock. I, this is some of their finished projects, as well as how I set it up. And then I also work at a daycare center, and I'm primarily with the toddlers. So on the next slide, you'll see some of their finished products. The four domains of development are physical, social, emotional, cognitive, and environmental. Physical refers to bodily changes. It occurs in relatively stable and predicting sequences. This is orderly and not random. It's changes in weight, size, hearing, vision, and muscle and bone thickness. There's two areas of development followed along with physical, which are gross motor and fine motor. Gross motor, this is improvement in skills using the large muscles. For example, running, jumping, skipping, and bike riding. Fine motor, on the other hand, involves the small muscles of the hands and fingers. For example, grasping, holding, cutting, and drawing. I have one of my examples from the first grade classroom. So we can see here the child using their pincer graphs with their fine motor skills, picking up the cotton balls as long as, along with picking up the circles. And then also using their fine motor skills, drawing, making the circles, and the facial expressions. The next is environmental. Environmental is factors that include proper nutrition and developmentally appropriate toys, activities, and interactions. So this is developmentally appropriate for first graders and toddlers to observe and watch their development. It's better than a test because we can watch and observe their prior knowledge to help them increase their development. Next is cognitive. Cognitive is called intellectual development. It's also called intellectual development. It is, refers to the process in which people used to gain knowledge. This is area of development such as language, thought, reasoning, and imagination. So as you can see, each child did their snowman completely differently. Some did it this way, some did it that way. It's watching how they use stems or snowflakes and the ways they put their cotton balls and facial expressions. This is them identifying colors and understanding and knowing the difference between tasks. Language and thought are a result of cognitive development and are both needed for remembering and problem solving. As children and mature and gain experience with the world, these skills develop. For example, in the toddler classroom when I was doing, when I was doing this with the children, I pulled them over two to three at a time, and one of the children had glue stuck all over their hands. So developmentally appropriate reaction is for them to start screaming and shouting and asking for help. With my first graders, on the other hand, I expect them to come to me, say, "I have glue stuck in my hands. What do I do?" Or automatically walk to the sink. It's those type of skills we're watching them develop. So next is social and emotional. These two are interrelated due to their similarity. So social is relating to others. So this is where it's important for me to point out the uniqueness of every child's project for their confidence and independence to flourish. So for this child, I would say, "I love how you designed a crown," or "I loved how you put snow falling." So this relates to emotional. Emotional involves feelings and expression of feelings such as trust, fear, confidence, pride, friendship, and humor. It's learning to express their emotions in an appropriate way, such as when they have the glue stuck on their fingers. So it's not being frustrated if something doesn't go their way, or they don't think that theirs looks as good as someone else's. So this is where a person's self-concept and self-esteem are also included. Student success, skills, and confidence flourish. It leads to healthy self-concept and sense of worth. So encouraging that each child's snowman, no matter the way they developed it, was the right way. There is no right way. So this is important when creating lesson plans to make it open-ended versus structured. Each area is closely related and is affected and influenced by each area. For example, in the daycare centers, a lot of the children have issues with their fine motor skills because they don't have them developed. So when creating this activity, when they used the glue, I had put it on a paper plate with glue and a paintbrush. With the first graders, we usually expect them to have those muscles gained by then. But they were, in the time of their daycare, it was COVID. So they had never really been exposed to those types of activities. So I didn't think I would have to use the paper plate and the glue. But the thing about children and their development is it's always changing. So you always have to meet them where they're at. So then I also provided them with the glue on a paper plate and a paintbrush. So a general, like, example, how each is closely related, is writing words. This requires fine motor, hand-eye coordination, as well as cognitive skills. Cognitive is needed to communicate with others and is essential for growing socially and emotionally. Development follows key patterns or principles. So when creating my lesson plan, there's an area where you have to do guidelines. The guidelines include math, science, history, health, all such things like that. And it's how you're going to present the activity to the child. So at the first grade classroom, that week, we had been talking about weather. We were going to get like a big snowstorm, but we never really got it. So it was like a good activity to connect with the kids. We were watching like the Weather Channel, and there's this cute thing on YouTube where it's like Quincy Weather for Kids. So it was like, it was very good to incorporate it with the children because we had already been talking about snow activities and sledding and creating snowmen. So how I presented it to the first graders is I just gave them the blue piece of paper along with the circles. It's all, it's important developmentally for them to see where they're at in their prior skills and knowledge. For example, the toddlers, they haven't really been exposed to snow and snowman. So I had to show them an example first. They still didn't really follow it just because they kind of like to put glue in all their circles everywhere. But with the first grade, it was important to watch what their prior knowledge had already been and like what they've been exposed to with their families. So over my three years in early ed, I learned that it's very important that to developmentally meet each child where they're at, even though they don't get there all at the same time, they still all follow the same patterns and principles. Thank you.
Excellent.
At this time, I would entertain any questions?
Mr. Gattro.
No questions. Just want to say, great presentation, great explanation. You clearly know your stuff.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Mrs. Perdiros.
Same. No questions. Thank you for coming tonight and presenting it so well to us. And just in reading your curriculum plan here and just that you have family engagement strategies, you have disability concerns, and just ways to pivot to handle those as well. And those are, that's fantastic to just, not just, this is what my plan's going to be, but how to pivot, and that's what it's all about, is just making sure every child can succeed. And I think you've got that down, so thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you. That was great. We're in good hands. Our kids come in the future, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Quincy's Outstanding Vocational Technical Student of the Year interview process. The selection criteria consisted of a three-point-five grade average, technical competence, excellent attendance, leadership qualities, vocational-related work experience, extracurricular activities, community involvement, and recipient of the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Tina Cow, a senior from North Quincy High School. I'm an alumni from Francis Parker Elementary and Atlantic Middle School. My career major is healthcare technology. I chose this major because at a young age, I attended many doctor's appointments with my doc, with my grandpa because of his illness, and I was very inspired by the nurses. Some skills that I've obtained is activities of daily living, bedmaking, vital signs, range of motions, bed baths, oral care, safety education, management, and leadership. Certifications and credentials that were earned by the end of this year is first aid, CPR for infant and adult, dementia training, Dean von medical terminology, Career Safe, homemade. And in April, I'll be taking my Massachusetts State Certified Nursing Assistant exam. My future plans will be attending Regis College, and I'll be majoring in nursing. My, I would like to pursue my career as a certified registered nurse and anesthetist. And at this point, I will present a live ECG. I did my project on ECG, also known as an electrocardiogram. An electrocardiogram is a test that records the heart's electrical activity using electrodes placed on the body, and it creates a visual representation of the heart's rhythms and helps doctors diagnose various heart conditions by analyzing the patterns of electrical signals. And I'll be demonstrating where I will place the electrodes and where the lead placements are. So first, we'll examine the patient and make sure that there's nothing interfering with the electrical activity, such as sweat or chest hair. So then we'll play, we'll begin to place the electrodes. So V1 will be on the right, which is on the fourth intercostal space. And V2 is parallel to V1, and we'll skip V3 and move to V4, which is on the midclavicular line. And then we will move back to V3, which is in between V2 and V4. And then we'll go to V6, which is on, well, V5, which is on the anterior axillary line. And then the V6, which is on the axillary line. And then we'll move to the limb leads. So we can place the limb leads anywhere from the upper to the lower arm. And we can mirror that onto the other arm. And then we can place the same thing anywhere from the upper leg to the lower leg, avoiding bones. And we'll mirror that to the other side. So this is a twelve-lead ECG machine, as you can see on the screen. The left side is that, is when there's no electrical activity, and we can't begin to print our rhythm strip. And the right side is when you can see clear reading of the electrical activity, and this is when we can proceed to print out a rhythm strip. A rhythm strip is a portion of an electrocardiogram that shows the heart's electrical activity over a specific period. It provides a detailed view of a heart rhythm, aiding in the identification of irregularities or abnormalities like arrhythmias. These strips focus on a single or a few leads, allowing healthcare professionals to closely analyze and diagnose various heart rhythm disturbances. And there's a rhythm strip right here.
Well, let me answer those.
That would have been fun. Any questions? Mr. Gattro.
I just want to say, Tina, I'm sure many of us in this room have had EKGs. You gave an incredible explanation. I learned a little bit, something here about the whole process, and I think you're going to do well, and we need more folks like you in the field, so good luck.
Mrs. Perdiros.
This is great, thanks. Can you tell me a little bit about the dementia, the dementia care that, training that you've received so far?
I haven't received that yet, but I will begin to do that in the next couple of months.
Okay, is that, do, does your program still go to, is it Atrium at Faxon Woods? Is it, do they still?
Um, no. We go to Marina Bay for our clinicals.
Gotcha. My grandmother had dementia. She was up at their, up at Atrium, and I remember seeing Quincy High students and going up there and doing their training up there, and it's amazing. It's really great, just the level of patience you all have when you come up there and just that spirit and energy. It really does impact the residents there. So it definitely makes a difference to them as much as you're getting your, your education and training as well. It definitely impacts them, so thank you for taking this path and for all you do.
Mr. Begoli?
Great presentation.
Thank you.
It looks like spaghetti to me when I go into a doctor's office. And I'm always nervous that you're going to put the wrong lead. So how do you, how do you, how do you learn that? I mean.
Each wire has a specific placement, and I guess, I don't know, you just get used to knowing where all the placements are.
Okay. I did that, I did it two weeks ago. I'm good.
Anyone else?
Thank you for your presentation. Thank you. And thank you because we do need nurses and medical people, you know, so thank you for taking those steps.
Quincy's Outstanding Vocational Technical Student of the Year interview process. CVT teachers nominated students deserving of this award and forward their names to Quincy's selection team. After reviewing student qualifications, the field was narrowed to nine nominees.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Katherine Ramos. I'm also a senior at Quincy High School. I'm an alumni of Marymount Elementary as well as Central Middle School. My career major is film and television production, and I chose it because in the summer of ninth grade, I was watching a behind-the-scenes video from the show Vampire Diaries, and I wanted to be in the middle of all of it. I loved the environment, and I wanted to immerse myself in it. Some skills that I've obtained so far are live broadcasting, directing a scene, framing a shot, maintaining continuity, variety of cameras, different microphone types, basic storytelling, formatting a screenplay, Adobe editing software, color correction, and special effects. Certifications and credentials that I'll receive by June are Career Safe, New Tech Tri-Caster Live Production, and Occupational Proficiency in Film and Television Production. My future plans are, I'm still undecided, but my top college right now is more College of Art and Design. My major is Film Studies, and my career is a movie director or a producer. And now my project that I'd like to present is a segment on how to throw away trash properly. This segment is a segment that aired on our weekly updates that air every Friday mornings in our homerooms. And this aired in October of 2023. And this is just one of the many segments that I've held, write, produce, direct, and edit for the weekly updates. Do you have trash? Do you think you know how to throw it away? Well, you don't. Trash is the biggest epidemic in QHS, and we need to overcome it. Students need to learn how to throw away their trash so staff aren't constantly cleaning up after the students. Trash cans are placed all around the cafeteria, both inside and out, yet we still find trash everywhere on the floor. What do you think about the trash that's left after lunches?
I think that everybody should take care of their own trash after every single lunch. That's what people should be doing. Unfortunately, I don't think it's always going to happen.
Can you tell us how important it is to separate your trash?
Oh, my goodness, that is so critical. We have taken, because of your program here, if we do it properly, we can get four hundred pounds of food trash totally taken out of the Quincy trash program each month. And that's, and more now that we've added North Quincy. That was just Quincy High School. So if we can do it properly, we reduce all of the amount of money Quincy spends on getting rid of your trash and recyclables, which all that money that we save goes right back to you guys and your programs. So it helps any funding that you guys might have for your school stuff.
Trash is constantly left behind despite all the opportunities students have to throw it away. And now Abby will show us the do's and don'ts of how to throw away trash.
Here we have, if there happened to be anything left in this, we would put any food that was left in here. Check that number. No number. Oh, bummer. Even though it's plastic and no number, it's got to be trash. Those have to be trash. And that plastic bag unfortunately has to be trash.
And this has been Katherine Ramos reminding you all to throw away your trash. And back to you, Raymond. That's great. And now I can answer any questions that anyone may have.
I just went to the Oscars this weekend.
And I suspect, hopefully, one day we'll see you there, you know? Best of luck.
Great.
Oldest is in this program, and I'm excited to see her follow in, in all that you've been able to accomplish so far. So thank you, it's really great.
Thank you.
Awesome. Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you. The Quincy's Outstanding Vocational Technical Student of the Year interview process. Students were interviewed by members of the Quincy School Community Partnership, who included Bay State Financial, Granite Telecommunications, Hale Family YMCA, Stop &amp; Shop Companies, Mass Hire South Shore Workforce Board, Quincy College, and City of Quincy Plumbing and Gas Inspector.
Good evening. My name is Isabel Hogan, and I'm a senior at Quincy High School. I'm an alumni of Snug Harbor Elementary and Central Middle School. My career major is plumbing technology, and I chose it because I wanted to be able to learn more practical and hands-on skills while I was in high school. Some of the skills I've obtained are Tier One Plumbing School skills, soldering PVC, cast iron, PEX, ladder safety, fixture installation, cutting and threading, general plumbing safety, management, and leadership. Some of the certifications that I will have received by June are OSHA 10 Construction, Hot Work Certification, and Occupational Proficiency in Plumbing Technology. For my future plans, I plan to attend the College of Booster in the fall and major in biochemistry. Now, I would like to present a video that I made on the different materials and connection methods used in the plumbing industry. Hi, my name is Isabel Hogan, and I'm a senior in the Plumbing Technology Program. This experience has been very rewarding for me, and I cannot wait to show you what I've learned. Today, I will be demonstrating some of the materials and connection methods used within the plumbing industry. First one I've got here is service weight cast iron, which is used commercially for waste and vet. It is connected using lead and oakum historically. Now, we have moved on to safer and newer options such as resilient gaskets and know-how crates. Next is PVC or polyvinyl chloride, which is used residentially and is connected using a two-part primer cement welt. And CPVC, chlorinated polyvinyl chloride, is used residentially for potable water. This is connected using only a one-part cement chemical welt. Next is PEX, which is cross-linked polyethylene and is used for residential potable water. There are three types, A, B, and C. We use A in the plumbing shop. It is connected using an expansion method, which I will be demonstrating now. So going to grab the tool and put on the expansion head. If I can get it on. Next, I'm going to put in the battery. And to prep the tubing, I am going to put on. Let's try here. Right? And now we're ready to expand it. And now, I'm just going to put in the fitting. And the memory of the tubing will reclose around and form a watertight seal. The next material we've got is the most versatile, and that is copper. It can do the jobs of any of the materials I've already shown. So it is very popular to be used in the plumbing industry. There are three types of connection methods. There is propress, push-to-fit, and soldering. And now I will demonstrate propress. Assemble the tool. Put the jaws in first before the battery. Down there. Then I'm going to prep the copper. Going to sand it down to get rid of any impurities. And then I'm going to place on the fitting and mark the depth with my handy dandy sharpie. Right? Now we can put on the jaws. And this clamps down on the copper and forms a Y. And this clamps down on the copper and forms a watertight seal with the over inside. The next connection method is soldering, which I will now demonstrate. First, I'm going to sand the pipe, again, get the imperities out of it. And I'm also going to sand the inside of the fitting. Now I'm going to put flux on the inside of the fitting and on the outside of the pipe. Hold it there. Just on there. Now we're ready. Turn on the torch. Going to make sure I'm heating it evenly so that it doesn't get burnt. So rapid motion for even heating. It does take a little while, but soon you'll be able to melt the solder right onto the copper. Not quite buttoned up yet. Now I'm just going to make sure I got copper or solder all the way around so that it's a nice watertight seal. All right. All done. Wipe it off. We have a nice soldered joint. Thank you so much for watching my demonstration. I hope you enjoyed. Does anyone have any questions?
So Mr. Guttrow?
I'm not only impressed with the skills that you've learned, but your ability to explain it unlike any plumber that's ever been to my house. And I want to ask you, College of Worcester, how did you choose that?
Initially, I found it, I play the bagpipes, and they have a bagpipe program there. So, but after I saw that they had a biochemistry program that I was really interested in and the community that I really wanted, I, I decided to go there.
Best of luck.
Thank you.
Please, Joe.
Well, I have the good fortune of knowing you outside of here, and I, so impressive. And I didn't even know about your plumbing skills. So you continue to impress me. You've got a great future ahead of you, and it's, it's amazing to watch. So great job. And we also could use some plumbing skills in my house, so you know, if you want to. Good job, Keno.
Thank you.
Superintendent.
So I have a question, actually. Every time, every year around this time, I have a broken pipe, usually outside, because I either turn on the water too soon for outside watering. Can you tell us if you know what of, which of these materials are the most durable and strong?
Um, I'd say probably cast iron is the most durable, but copper is also very durable and very versatile, as I explained. And it comes in many different thicknesses. So if you use K for outside, that's the type of copper, then it's the thickest and most durable.
Great. And then that's what I'll do. I've been having, my plumber install, I think, PEX, and every year it breaks. So I'm going to, I'm going to ask him to, I wish I could do it myself, and it looks like it could be done, but I'll ask them to go with the copper. So thank you for that recommendation.
Or turn your water off.
Turn my water off, right?
That's, that's kind of what we do. Amazing, multi-talented girl that you are. And yeah, that's impressive. Bagpipes, plumbing, and then biochemistry. So best of luck, and thank you for the presentation. I think we maybe all learned a little something. But I think it's all about the tools, right? And I don't have any of them, so. But thank you.
Quincy's Outstanding Vocational Technical Student of the Year interview process. Nominees were questioned about their career major, skills learned, credentials earned, and contributions made at their high school and community, as well as post-graduation plans. In addition, nominees demonstrated their technical competence by sharing a slide or video presentation in their major.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kimmy Valet. I am honored to be selected as the Quincy Public Schools 2024 Outstanding Vocational Technical Student of the Year. Thank you. It's a mouthful. So I go to Quincy High, and I'm also an alumni of Quincy Catholic Academy. My career major is fashion technology, and I chose it because studying fashion has been my long-term dream ever since I was six years old. Sewing always came very naturally to me, and fashion really gave me a way to express myself and explore my creativity. Some of the skills I've obtained over the years are sketching, draping, visual arts, garment construction, pattern making, public speaking, and leadership. And some of the certifications and credential that I will receive is Career Safe and Occupational Proficiency of Fashion Design. So my future plans are that I will be attending a fashion design school called ESmod in Paris, France, which stands for l'École Supérieure des Arts et Techniques de la Mode. Had to put some French in there. And my major will be fashion design. And today I would like to present to you one of my all-time favorite garments that I have created, and I will show you that now. Can everybody see? Big reveal. So here's the garment that I am presenting tonight. It is a dress completely made out of plastic bags, as you can see. And also, as you can imagine, it is not the easiest thing to sew a bunch of plastic bags together. So in my presentation today, I kind of wanted to explain the message behind this dress, as well as kind of the construction, to show you what my mind, what was going through my mind and everything while creating this dress. So sustainability, why is it important in fashion? Because fashion industries all over the world are always creating so much waste, and that is something we should really be worried about, such as this company Shein. I don't know if many of you have heard of it, but if you haven't, it is a fast fashion company based in China, and they give every single one of their products in a separate plastic bag, every little shirt, every little skirt. They're all in different bags. So obviously, I did not buy all of these. I have collected them. But it just kind of shows and spreads a message that the fashion industry has a lot of, a lot of waste and a lot of plastic coming out of it, and we should really care about it to fix some of the sustainability and really get people to know the damage that is being done. So a little bit more about this dress. I wanted to show a bit in the presentation, kind of the construction of it and how I paid attention to lines and formations, as well as, you know, putting in some pops of color and obviously some tissue paper, because it would have been completely see-through. And so in the presentation, I also showed something called a dart. And for those who are not fashionistas, except for you, Ms. Kaplan, I just wanted to show a little bit that even though I was using plastic bags, I still use the same techniques that I would use on regular fabric, which was a challenge sometimes, but I made it work. And I also wanted to show the back, which is another fun surprise. I have this long train here, as well as kind of like a corset bodice type top. And this whole dress is held together by Velcro on the side here, or in the middle here and on the side. And I just wanted to show a little bit of like, again, how I use the, the name of the, on the bags and everything, to try and kind of make this dress in the most unique way possible. And as well as these straps that, you know, were a little pop because I thought it was nice. And I also want to show a little bit how I actually constructed it. So I did sew these backs together with a sewing machine. So just like regular fabric, I used all my regular techniques and all of that. And of course, I used a little bit of tape to, you know, make it look prettier and just to keep things all together and secure. And this dress was actually presented in four different fashion shows over the years, and those include the New England Ninth Annual Fashion Show in 2023, as well as the Style in the Mill Fashion Show, giving the Glam Fashion Show fundraiser in 2022, which Quincy High School attended, as well as the Quincy High School Annual Fashion Show. This dress was part of a three-piece collection that I made two years ago, part of the program all with Ms. Kaplan's amazing help. And the photo on the right in this presentation is from a show called the Style in the Mill Fashion Show. And this picture was taken by professional photographers with a professional model. And it's just to kind of show you a bit of, you know, the runway world and things I got to experience because of this amazing program. And I have done lots of other fashion shows, including last year's Quincy High Fashion Show, where I presented my six-piece collection. And this year I am working on another six-piece collection, maybe eight-piece. We'll see about that. And it is a Star Wars theme. So I love, you know, doing themes and things like that and being able to show them off in amazing fashion shows, like how this dress has been seen, really gets, you know, kind of my creations out there and the publicity that I need to skyrocket this. So my family and I will attend the 38th Annual Outstanding Vocational Technology Student of the Year Award Ceremony on Thursday, April 11th, 2024, in Mechanics Hall, Worcester, Massachusetts. Fifty-six recipients from 56 districts across Massachusetts will join me. Does anybody have any questions?
Where are you, Mayor? Mayor Koch.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. To all of you, really, we, we sit up here on a regular basis. We discuss budgets, we discuss MCAS scores, we discuss all types of policies, absenteeism, all of those things. And sometimes we get caught up in that world and we forget really what it's all about. And each of you tonight were brilliant, articulate, you knew your subject matters. Obviously, you did your homework, and I think you're all in for a great future. And certainly, as one member of the school committee, it make, it brings meaning to the work that we do. So congratulations to each of you, and I know you're all going to be very successful. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
I just want to say, Kimmy Valet?
Yes.
Yeah, perfect name for the fashion industry. Good luck.
Hopefully it'll be out there.
I'll just say congratulations on the one.
Thank you.
And we have my pay job I worked in last year, part of the project, and we have grants that we give to somebody recycling and business industry. And I've not seen anything of innovation come out of it.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, thank you. And just to reiterate Mayor Koch's sentiment, it makes us so happy and proud to see students take advantage of all of the great things we have to offer in our school system. And having you here to highlight that really shows us the work that's being, being done by your teachers and faculty and staff and everyone. So we appreciate you coming and sharing, and good luck with everything. Okay, back to order. And now we'll move to the superintendent's report.
Great, thank you, and good evening again, everyone. And again, congratulations to us, students. I will run through the superintendent's report. The first item on the agenda is the recent and upcoming Quincy Public Schools events. This past Monday, Monday, interested Grade Eight students from all five middle schools attended Performing Arts Fly-Up Day at Quincy High School to learn about the opportunities available to them next year as students at both high schools. The students saw performances by the combined high school band, choir, and color guard, the jazz band, and a drama performance by club members from both high schools. Students had the opportunity to talk with performing arts teachers, advisors, and current high school students. Thank you to Quincy High School for hosting the event and all the staff members who organized this showcase for our students. On Tuesday, March 19th, the curriculum team will host a parent academy for kindergarten through grade five, Bringing the Science of Reading Home. Again, it's entitled Bringing the Science of Reading Home. That will be at 5:00 PM on Zoom. Next is the middle school STEM fairs are coming up, starting with Broad Meadows on March 14th at 5:30 PM. Central Middle School on March 21st at 5:00 PM. Point Webster Middle School on March 21st at 5:30 PM. Atlantic Middle School on March 21st at 6:00 PM. And Southwest Middle School on April 30th at 5:00 PM. Calendar invites will be sent to the school committee members later this week. Next is incoming Grade Nine students and their parents and guardians are invited to learn about the course selection process at next week's high school course selection nights. Quincy High School will be Monday, March 11th, and North Quincy High School will be Wednesday, March 13th, both at 6:30 PM. Spring drama productions will begin next week, with Broad Meadows Middle School presenting Annie on March 7th and 8th at 7:00 PM, and March 9th at 2:00 PM. North Quincy High School and Quincy High School Drama Clubs are presenting Beauty and the Beast over two weekends in March, on Friday, March the 15th and 22nd at 7:00 PM, and Saturday, March the 16th and March 23rd at 2:00 PM. We hope to see everyone there, and we've seen some of the pre-production work, and it's going to be a, a great, great production by our students. And thank you to the staff who put the, and students who put the drama production together. Next, Mayor Koch is hosting the Second Annual Remember the Ladies Presentation in T on Saturday, March 9th at 2:00 PM at Quincy High School. Southwest Middle School Principal Courtney Mitchell is being recognized, along with Assistant District Attorney and former school committee member Barbara Izola, as well as Mrs. Linda Santoro from the Quincy Art Association, local business owner Karen Smith, and Dr. Daries Cox from Bay State Community Services. Members of the community are also invited to this special event. Congratulations to all of these honorees. Next is the following high school teams. This is our winter to 2024 Athletic MIA Tournament update. The following high school teams qualify for the 2024 Winter Athletics MIA Tournament. Number 33 seed North Quincy Boys Hockey was defeated unfortunately by Diamond Regional Vocational Technical High School, 5 to 3 in the preliminary round. Number 20 seed North Quincy Girls Basketball was defeated by Whitman Hansen, 63 to 60 in round, in the 32nd round. Number nine seed Quincy High School Girls Basketball defeated Hopkinton in the round 32, but lost a very close game, 50 to 49 to Lexington High School in round 16. So congratulations to all of our teams for getting so far. Athletic Director Kev Mahoney will present a more detailed review of winter athletics and a preview of spring athletics at subcommittee, at the subcommittee meeting on March 20th at 6:00 PM. And again, congratulations to all of our winter sports and student athletes, coaches, as well for their successful season. Next is the MSBA Squanam Elementary School Project Update. At the February 27th, 2024 MSBA Board Meeting, the Squanam Elementary School Project was invited to move into the next project phase of schematic design, which is great. The next six months will be busy ones, and they will be focused on developing the project scope and budget for review at the August 28th, 2024 MSBA Board Meeting. I do want to thank everyone on the Squanam Building Committee, Squanam Building Committee and team for making this project move forward as quickly as possible, and the designs are looking great, and we'll share them with you as soon as we can. Next is the school committee received a copy of the FY 2024 Grant Booklet in their packets. This is a compilation of competitive entitlement grants for the 2023-2024 school year. Thanks to Jim Malaney and Jill Poland for working with the superintendent's leadership team membership on administrating these grants. The grant booklet can be discussed at an upcoming Budget and Finance Subcommittee meeting. And with that, that completes my superintendent's report.
Thank you. Yes.
I just had a point of clarification, if that's okay.
Sure.
The Beauty and the Beast Show, there's actually the time change, there's, there's just a couple of time things that I just wanted to clarify on that. So the Friday, March 15th, and Friday, March 22nd, they're both at 7:30 PM. And the Saturday, March 16th and March 23rd, both Saturdays, there's a 2:00 PM and a 7:30 PM show, just to make sure viewers at home are aware of the, there's six total shows for that. And it's going to be great.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, so old business. Mr. Guttrow, we have the school committee meeting calendar for 2024-2025 open for discussion. Any discussion on that?
No discussion about that in policy subcommittee. I don't know if there's any further discussion. If not, ask, motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Mr. Begoli.
I think it's a sit for one more meeting.
Yes. To move it to the next meeting.
Yes.
Took for vote. And also, school committee policy book, agenda format revision, same, Mr. Guttrow?
Yeah, we had a discussion in the subcommittee. I don't think there's any further.
Any other further discussion, questions? Okay, so we move that to the next meeting for a vote.
Thank you.
Okay, correct. And in new business, next presentation we have is the School Nutrition Program Update by Ms. DeFarr.
We have more coming in, more people.
Thank you. Thank you. We had two that aren't here, so. Thank you.
Yeah.
They're not here. They're not here. Yep, that's good. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Before I begin my presentation portion, I am here to introduce Sam Eichlin and Ryan Echols. They are chefs from Project Bread. Sam's gonna start his presentation first.
Thank you, Sarah, and thank you to members of the school committee, Mayor Koch, Superintendent Mulvey. We're happy to be here with you all tonight, so thank you for having us. A quick overview of Project Bread. We're a food security organization with a radical approach to ending hunger, and we do this through policy prevention and partnership. And I'm here to talk to you tonight about one of our really wonderful partnerships that we have here with the Quincy School Nutrition Department. This advances the slides? Here we go. Great. So Project Bread, we envision a Massachusetts where hunger is permanently solved by connecting people and communities in Massachusetts to reliable sources of food while advocating for policies that make food more accessible so that no one goes hungry. As I mentioned, we're going to talk about our work together with Quincy. Quincy's been enrolled in our School Food Fellowship Program for the past two years. Well, they're in the second year. They're in the second, we're well into the second year. It's a two-year professional development opportunity for school nutrition staff in participating districts. So this year, the other districts that are involved are New Bedford and Lowell. So Quincy's joining a great cohort of really innovative and exciting school nutrition programs. The staff that choose to participate receive monthly online trainings from my team of chef educators, Chef Ryan, and we have another chef, Chef Sherry Hughes, who also is in Quincy from time to time. And they also receive weekly site visits in individual, to individual schools where we can really hone in on any types of skills that have been taught in the online trainings. And we're really looking at the school nutrition directors, we work closely with them, but we're also looking at the cafeteria managers, the head cooks, and the kitchen assistants. But no one is turned away who's interested in learning more. So we have a whole variety of folks from the kitchens who join us for our online trainings and for the onsite trainings as well. And we are very fortunate to have Monica and Soraya here from the kitchens as well. They're two head cooks who are working closely with Chef Ryan, so you'll hear more about the food that's in front of you from them. And our training content really draws on our years of experience working with school nutrition staff, staff feedbacks. So after every training, the staff get to tell us what they liked, what they would like to see more of, what they're seeing in their schools, and we respond to that feedback. So we're very responsive to the trends and challenges that they're facing. Some of our goals, if you're wondering what we're looking at in terms of focus areas, we work closely with the school nutrition departments to make sure that what we're training the staff on is aligned with what their goals are. So high on our list are new culinary skills and techniques. We focus a lot on recipes. There's lots of things we can teach through recipes and the skills that are inherent in those recipes. So one focus in Quincy's been plant-based recipes as well as developing and taste-testing culturally-connected menu options. And we look at developing kitchen leadership as well. You know, these kitchens are working, these folks in these kitchens are working very hard to feed all these kids, so we want to make sure that the leadership there feels supported and well-equipped to do that big job that they're doing. We have great examples right here with Monica and Soraya. And then supporting staff in new positions and different kitchens as they move through the district. Our online trainings, this is just, this is our course offering for this year. These are, these monthly trainings we've talked about. We've, let's see, we just wrapped up Plant-Based Center of the Plate, so that's where we are in our rotation. And then this coming month, we'll be doing something on reducing food waste in schools. We saw that great presentation from the students about throwing food away and composting. This will be actually kind of a nice little aspect of that as well. So they join us once a month online for an hour-long training via Zoom, and we go over any number of topics, but this is what we've got this year. Some of the feedback we've gotten from the staff that have participated, one of our cafeteria managers said, "It made me feel more confident in myself participating in the online trainings and in the fellowship program." And this is from one of our school nutrition directors, just talking about the confidence and support that their staff gained through the work that we've done together in order to really step up and do an awesome job. And we really believe as well that the staff in the school nutrition departments are already doing a fantastic job, and sometimes it's just a matter of having a little bit more support, a little bit more opportunity to really move some of their ideas forward. So Chef Ryan's going to talk a bit about the recipe development piece of that. But we believe really strongly that these folks are working hard, doing everything they can to feed these kids, and we're happy to be a part of that work with them. These are some things that the staff had to say about their work with Project Bread over the years. This is from our end-of-year survey last year, so it's a word cloud. The bigger the word, the more often it appeared in their survey. We asked them to describe the fellowship program in three words. So fun was high on the list, informative, educational. You see love on there, which I think is very cool. They thought it was relevant, productive, creative, engaging. So these are things that we really strive for with the staff as well, because they're coming after school hours, schools, you know, they're done, they clean up their kitchens for the day, and we're bringing them online to join us for another hour of professional development. So we really want it to be fun, we want it to be informative, we want it to be engaging and relevant, and fortunately, that's what we've seen. So we're very, very happy to be here with you all tonight. We're happy to be a part of the Quincy Public School community and to get to work with these fantastic folks right here. I'm going to let Sarah and Ryan and Soraya and Monica talk about the food that you're eating and the program itself in action, but thank you.
Thank you. Okay, good evening. Those of you know me already, my name is Sarah Dufour. I'm the school nutrition director here in Quincy. This is my eighth year here, and I also brought with me, as Sam said, two employees from our schools, both at North Quincy High School, Monica and Soraya. Before we get into the whole presentation, I just wanted to explain the food that you have in front of you. Each year, we try to figure out, how are we going to feed you? What are we going to give you this year that's new and innovative and exciting and showcases what we've done since the last time you've seen us? We chose Shepherd's Pie because this is a strong Irish community, and as we know, St. Patrick's Day is coming up, so it's something that not only are the kids getting in the cafeteria, but they're also eating it at home. We are also a strong Chinese community, so we thought we would introduce something that we serve to the students right before Chinese New Year's, which is the tofu fried rice. So together, these two very different cuisines really do make up the diversity that we have at Quincy Public Schools. And then for something fun and innovative, we decided to serve you a little April Fool's Day joke called Is It Pizza? For those of you who are familiar with the Is It Cake show on TV, this is Is It Pizza? So it's a dessert-style pizza. It's a whole-grain bread with vanilla yogurt, high-protein chickpea spread with fresh strawberries. So that's your little treat. Do we like it? Is It Pizza? So again, I wanted to put a little spotlight on two really fantastic employees that we have here in Quincy. First, we have Monica. She is the manager at North Quincy High School. She's been with us for 10 years, and through the SEIU, she received her degree in Business Management in Food and Beverage. So she's been doing a really great job for us in bringing her culinary skills to us and also the things that she makes at home for her own family, so it's been a pleasure to have her with us. Next, we have Soraya. She is our newly-appointed elementary senior cook, and she handles the elementary meals at the satellite program at North Quincy High School. She's been with us for 15 years. She also helps her daughter's catering business, so she's a busy woman. Together, these two lead staff that make about 4,000 meals a day, and we serve close to, close to 9,000 a day, so they're doing almost half in their kitchens at North Quincy High School with the resources that we have. They do an amazing job, they bring a lot of love to the food that they create, and they're a great sounding board for me to help bounce ideas off of. So I wanted you all to meet just some of the faces that do create the food for your staff and the work that goes into it. Again, Sam and Ryan shared a little bit about what Project does across Massachusetts and what they have done for the school systems. And Quincy is so lucky to be a part of this program. They reached out to me a year and a half ago, and all three of us had just had children. So we were all like trying to figure out how we can make this relationship work, and they had told me all the creative things that they did with the different districts that they had already worked with, and we just had to, had to get together and make it work because they just bring so much culinary skills that our staff is either already doing or could really use. And the diversity aspect of the recipes that they develop is really just huge for us, and I thought that this is perfect for Quincy with the community that we have. We also, it actually motivated us to do the Walk for Hunger, so we did. We got about 20 of us, and we raised about $500, and we spent a nice Saturday together, and we did some exercise, and we helped for a good cause. So I just wanted to show you some pictures of food that either the staff has prepared or Chef Ryan has helped us prepare. Our salad bar in the bottom right-hand corner is just one example of the salad bars that we have all across Quincy. It's really fresh, it's plentiful, there's great protein options, great whole-grain options, fresh veggies and fruit, so it's awesome. For Halloween, we did the Mummy Dogs, which was homemade. We took pizza dough and wrapped up the turkey franks, and we also served it with a dirt cup, which is cookie crumble and gummy worms. And then we also had some really cool chicken options, too. This is more of the life of Quincy food service workers. We have Chef Sherry in the picture on the right-hand side. She's not here with us tonight, but she's a very accomplished chef, and she has been scattered throughout the district helping the staff bring some culinary skills to life. In September, probably late September, Mara Healy, Governor, came to Snug Harbor and officially put into act the free meals program across Massachusetts. It was a huge honor to have her in our district, to be able to showcase this new plan for the school system across Massachusetts, and huge for Quincy. The benefits of the free meal program is just endless. I know I sat here before you last year and said, if this were to become a real thing, it would just be a game changer for our program. It would bring in more revenue to help build the program, make the food better, make the food fresher, make the equipment more up to date. It would take away the unpaid meal debt that's always an issue for any district. It would save parents' time and money, it would, it would create a more cohesive learning environment for students. So these are all just what-ifs and maybes, and this year, it's been a true thing for us, and it continues to go on past this year. So we're so excited about it, and it's just been a huge benefit. So anyone who is more numbers-driven, I just wanted to give you a little bit of an idea of what universal free benefits means for Quincy specifically. I created a guide of what we've done for meals for breakfast and lunch throughout the time that I've been here, because I wanted to show you a pre-COVID and a COVID and a post-COVID guideline of what's been going on. So annually, these numbers are annual, so lunch and breakfast, you can see the two columns. 2015 to 2019, our numbers are pretty steady as far as what we were doing annually for lunch and breakfast. And then we hit our COVID years, and those were challenging for us because the kids weren't in the building. So we had to keep ourselves productive by making it possible for parents and kids to come to our schools, grab their meals, and leave. And we did that for the better part of one year, and then even a little bit into the second year when we had a lot of shutdowns and a lot of absences and a lot of at-home schooling. But you can see that we still kept our numbers at a fairly constant rate. But then come to 2021, 2022, and beyond, and those numbers just skyrocketed. So right now, in 23-24, we have served over a half a million meals, and we anticipate that we will get to a million meals by the end of this year. So, and that's just for lunch, so we have a whole other number for breakfast. So this is, this is huge. It's a, it brings value to our jobs, and it gives us a lot of joy. With the extra revenue from COVID and also from these new meal programs, we were able to buy a food service truck, we were able to buy a new serving line for Atlantic, we were able to buy a Combi oven, which is an amazing oven. We hope to buy a lot more of these, but it's a steamer and convection in one, and our food can get moist and crisp up instead of just being dried out, so it's a really great benefit. We also have a ton of new freezers and new refrigeration at North Marshall Point and Broad Meadows. And starting next week, we are actually launching a new cloud-based POS system after we purchased 10 new computers. This will help us keep up to speed with Aspen, and we're not dealing with server issues and is it communicating, is everything working? So this will be a faster way to get kids through the lunch, excuse me, the lunch line. We've also increased our hours for our secondary cafeteria helpers. This is going to help us handle the meal volumes that we're serving, and we also increased the hours for the elementary school managers that are doing breakfast in the classroom. Some more pictures of inspiring meals that we've served here in Quincy. We really try to bring our cultural dishes to the forefront. Soraya helped us create the chicken tahini and rice dish. This is part of her Lebanese culture, so it was a big hit with elementary school kids, and we're bringing it around to the middle and high school kids as well. And again, the last one, the soy ginger glazed tofu. Similar to what you're eating tonight, we try to incorporate some plant-based stuff because we are seeing a growing need from the students into wanting plant-based. I also wanted to mention a little bit about our food waste program, our food waste diversion program. I loved the video that the student had. I grabbed her, and I said, "We need that video," because I know we have one for us to share with adults and kids, but coming from a student, I think that's huge. It's the voice of the kids. But we added North Quincy High this year. Last year was just Quincy High, now it's North, so about 1,500 meals a day, give or take, and we're collecting 1,450 pounds of waste a week, 600 gallons of recycling per week. And we use extensively the share table to get kids to not throw it away, to put it on the share table, so maybe then another child can come and take it and enjoy it versus just throwing it away. And thankfully, we were able to actually add these tasks to the School Nutrition Union Job Description through the MOA this year. So now, in the, behind the scenes in the kitchen, our staff is required to use the food waste diversion process and also to manage the share table, so that's really huge. And lastly, I just wanted to add, I always put this in our slides, just our different social media and our website, so Twitter, Facebook, and Instagram, you can find us on there. Our website is a great resource for parents and for teachers and principals and anybody looking to see, hey, what's on the menu? What are parents asking about? The free and reduced applications there, how to get refunds for your students if you want some money returned to you, and anything else you could possibly need, allergies, carb counts for the kids. And that is it. Any questions, comments, thoughts on your meal tonight? Oh, yes, we also actually have one other thing. Monica, she is the creator, along with Ryan's help, from Mon Steak Seasoning, and with the help of Project Bread, they created little spice containers for you, so you can go home and cook. So you can go home and cook yourself some steak, put a little spice on there.
And this is what's on there in the Shepherd's Pie tonight, right?
Yes, this is also, yes, what, how we made Shepherd's Pie.
This is in the Shepherd's Pie, created by Monica.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Standing up to help, but it's already done.
That's great. Sarah, you just blow me away every year. You and your team do an amazing job. The food tonight, exceptional. Thank you, ladies. It was really good. And Project Bread, thank you for partnering with the city of Quincy. I know the good work you do and appreciate the fact that you chose us with New Bedford and Lowell, right?
That's right. Yeah, thank you. We're happy to be here.
Nothing but good things to say. Thank you.
On the menu. And I was looking for the dessert bar. I didn't see that one either. I'm glad I graduated a long time ago. Nice job. Doing great work in our schools. Very proud of all the work being done, all the updating too, through the federal money, Sarah. Really outstanding work. Thank you all.
I have a few questions. My first one is, what happens? So I go to North and then by the end of fourth, the share table is great and I see people grab from it, but normally by the end of like the lunches, it's full. Are, are the staff members like authorized to grab? You can grab, right? It doesn't like, once you're done, you don't trash it?
No.
Okay, okay. Okay. That makes me feel good. And then my second question was, so I'm vegan. And then when I'm trying to use the web menus and try and like figure out if the food is vegan, I have to like, there's no, I don't know if this is like something you can actually change, but I don't think I can click vegan. I have to like click something along the lines of like allergic to dairy, allergic to eggs and then go allergic to chicken and then, or one of the, one of the animal, and allergic to, or can't eat pork. And then somehow like steak isn't an option to like, and then also allergic to shell. So it's like annoying, you know? Yeah, so I don't know if that's something you can.
I'll definitely look into that. I'm sorry, see if our provider offers a better way to do that.
Thank you.
You're the first vegan I have encountered here, so that's good to know.
Yeah, and I think over like my years at the school, ever since I've like gone to high school, I think the choices for veganism have increased, especially with the salad bar opening like this year. So I'm glad to see where it's going and hope that, you know, maybe someday we'll have a vegan option like every day.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
I've been actually really excited to, to be up here for this presentation and I think I missed it during the COVID year when, when I was on here before. But, so I'm really excited to hear about everything that we've done. I think we've come a long way in trying to make things healthier, trying to make things, and definitely the cultural connections, I think have been increased even this year. I have three kids. One never eats school lunch, one always eats school lunch and one, it depends on the menu. So all over the place. And, but the one that eats it every, every day loves the cultural, the connections that, to try different things. The Lunar New Year week that you had, a bunch of different kind of Asian offerings was fantastic. The shawarma chicken. And of course, I collected all the, the details and questions they had too, that they also hear from friends. But, you know, the wings of fire that they had, you know, today, like just, there's different things that are exciting to kids and it makes them try, you know, just different things. The boom boom sauce, I hear all about the boom boom sauce at home and just, so in addition to the, just the standbys, the tacos, the cheeseburgers, I think that's really great. Couple of things I did have a question on though, there's a couple of days and sometimes it's maybe once a month or once every other month, there's, there's an offering of a parfait and like baby carrots. And like things like that, that don't seem to align with some of the other meals that are offered. And I'm just kind of wondering how, so it just doesn't seem to be enough food on that day when it, or it's just kind of like side dishes kind of together. Is there a reason that those days are like that? Is it, are you seeing kids kind of asking more for like a bunch of snacks that kind of come together as a meal or is it, is it just kind of the luck of the draw?
So parfait, what grade?
Middle school.
Okay. So the way the regulations work is you have to have two ounces of protein, two servings of bread. This is middle school, a fruit at a half a cup portion, a vegetable at a half a cup portion and a milk. So the child can take all of those things or three of those things. So it may just be a conversation that this child has to have with the cashier, what else can I have? What else can you give me? Because there's always more options. Something like parfaits, it might just look smaller because for things like wings of fire, there's the bone, there's the skin. So a volume of the two ounces of protein is actually bigger because they have to, we have to take out the bone, take out the skin when we're actually thinking about the weight of what we're giving the child. Whereas the yogurt's a little bit more full protein. So we always give the minimum of what we're supposed to have with the option of taking more. And some kids don't want more and some do, but fruit and vegetables, they could take as much as they want.
And that's articulated to them, that they can take extra?
Yeah, at the register, yeah.
That's great. And bear with me, I have a bunch of questions. So the vegan option, I appreciate that too. And I'm glad you're using the website to find those meals.
Yes.
That's fantastic to hear. But along those lines, there's also students that culturally can't eat meat on a certain time. So not even, you know, choosing to be vegan, but also, you know, culturally or religious exceptions, that might be a great reason to have that option on there if there's a way to do that. And I'm, so the, the thing that I hear kind of most often is, and I know this is hard to do because you're making so many meals and it's so difficult to kind of anticipate how many kids are going to buy lunch each day. But I hear it specifically at Central, it might be a bigger issue than that, but by last lunch, the kids at the end of the line at last lunch are not ever getting the meal of the day. Is there a way that you're checking in? Is there a communication loop that you have with each school to kind of find out is, if there are regular shortages that can bump up so that the kids can, you know, at the, at the end of the line there can, can still get that meal and they're not just eating the, the, you know, grilled cheese kind of option?
Yeah. So we have to, by Department of Ed standards, have production records. These ladies are very familiar with those. So when we have a meal like the wings of fire, Monica can go back and look at the last time she served wings of fire and say, okay, we served 500 meals. We made 510, prepped 510. We should probably go 525 next time. So there is a, a way to, to look back in history and say, this is what happened on that day. They love it. We didn't make enough. We have to make more. So that's really just a, a conversation I should have checking in with somebody at Central and make sure that they're doing that. Because yes, every child should have what's on the meal when they walk in, just because they're at fourth lunch. We are serving far more, as I said. So there is that challenge of, do we have enough staff? Do we have enough time? Do we have enough ordered? And that is something that's happening right now this year, saying, how do we get there? How do we know exactly what we need? Because it's constantly growing. So our numbers are just more and more each day. Monica alone at North Quincy High School, I think pre-COVID was serving five to 600 meals. Now she'll come in and go, we hit 1,000 today. So there's a lot of growing happening right now this year and we're, we're kind of learning on the fly. So it is a conversation that I'll have with the managers to make sure because you don't want the same kids who are having fourth lunch and missing that meal. But yeah, we're definitely working through some challenges.
Yeah, and not to specifically call out that school. Just, I don't know if it extends beyond that, but just, you know, and not to create any more work for, for these ladies here. But just to kind of try to figure out how we can kind of address that challenge. So, you know, just going forward. And if the, if you were to have extra meals, can you save them and serve them the next day at all? Or like, is there any chance of doing that so that you're kind of short of a little cushion or?
Yeah, we can't re-serve cooked, but yeah, like, you know, we'll prep chicken nuggets or burgers, but if it's been cooked, we don't re-serve.
Gotcha.
But if it's been held cold and then waited to cook next day, yeah, we can cook. So we try to make sure we're doing the right thing.
Yeah.
With how much we, we don't want to over-prep either.
Of course. Yeah, yeah, again, for all the work you're doing. You don't want to have to, yeah, exactly. And just two more questions, I think. So the My School Bucks accounts. Families that had money in their My School Bucks accounts before COVID, then everything shut down and then we came back and everything was kind of universally free, which is fantastic. Like you say, I think it goes to the, the stigma, you know, no one's, everyone's getting it for free and I think that's great. And they're, we know that they're nutritious meals. But families who may not even remember that they had that money on their account, is there a way that we can more widely advertise or get that information to families that they can get that money back? I know you can use it for snacks, but sometime, I mean, you know, the cost of everything has gone up so much that, so there are some families that really could use that money back, but just may have forgotten that it's there. Is there a way that we could communicate that maybe a little bit more widely?
Sure. We have on our website, the refund request form that parents can read, can, parents can access and then they can email me. It takes between a month to five weeks just because it goes through our payment system. So we treat it like a bill and pay it monthly with our rest of our bills. I can get that to principals and they can put that on their flyers. But I usually am refunding people once or twice a week. So the message is for the most part out there, I think, but definitely can over-communicate so that.
Yeah, I think that would be great.
Yeah.
You know, and if you're getting no responses, then you know you've, you know, you've hit it, right?
Yeah.
That people have gotten it. And, and then I think, I think you've answered almost all my, I think I just had one. Last one was milk. Have we had any issues with expired milk or expiration dates on milk or any issues? I, I feel like I've heard that a couple of times from some parents this year, but, you know, it could have been just situational.
We get a 10-day lead with every milk delivery. So they're, the staff's really good at just making sure, doing a spot check with all the cases to make sure that we get the 10, 10 days and we get a milk delivery every week. So they'll rotate and, and make sure that that doesn't happen. If it does, they can always email me or contact the school and let us know, but everyone's usually pretty good about that.
And then lastly, Soraya, I think I just remembered one last one. Do you ever, are there any plans in the works of doing some kind of survey for the kids? Like even taking two months of meals and kind of saying, you know, you guys have had all these meals for two months. Rank them. Which ones did you like? Which ones didn't you like? Just so that, you know, shawarma chicken, if it was really popular, maybe that could be every three weeks. It may be like, you know, pizza, maybe not every week. You know, just different things like that.
Yeah.
There's a survey.
We've done tastings. Ryan has done tastings. And we, I think that's a great idea and we should do that. The other, the thing also is we try to bring out meals that might not be massively popular, but it does hit the group of kids that don't feel represented in their cultural dishes. So, you know, if there's a meal that the majority of the kids don't eat at home or don't see at home, but there's just a small group of kids that might get this at home and might be something that mom or dad cooks. It could be a really, really inclusive thing to have it available. So we try not to say like, oh, we're not going to serve that because it's, it's not popular. It's just kind of enticing kids into new cultural dishes. But I do think that's a really good idea to rank them, to get some idea of what's really hitting home and what's not after we've tried it for.
Yeah, just to get some feedback. Cause it seems like you're doing a lot of forethought into what kids would like, you know, what's best to, for them to try different cultural things, but you know, really just kind of asking for their feedback, I think would be the last kind of thing to close that feedback loop there. But I think you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, the whole team there. Thanks.
Thank you.
I thought of another few questions. So I know someone who's celiac, so they, they can't touch gluten. Are there options for them or?
Yes. We do have a meal modification form on our website. They would have to have celiac listed in their account so that we can see it. And it's usually, it's put there by a nurse. So they should, they'd have a doctor diagnose and then their nurse at their school inform us so we can put that on their account. So one, it would flag us to know that they, they have this issue and that they aren't accidentally taking something when they exit the line. And then the other thing would be that they would, they could contact us and we can work directly with them to create a menu with them. We have a couple of students across the district that have a very specific gluten-free menu for themselves.
So they'd have to like go through you and work?
Eventually, yeah.
Okay, so there's no like direct option?
Meaning going into the cafeteria and having it available? So this student probably knows this, it's super expensive, the breads that, that we buy. So we need to make sure that we're working with a student that has been diagnosed this issue and that we're properly supplying them.
Yeah. My second question was, are you guys considering more labeling at the salad bar? Cause this is probably just me, but sometimes I see things and I don't know what they are. Or just, or I don't know the ingredients and I think.
We try. It's not working all the time. It's liable to, it gets dirty and then you just stick on it and then it goes away and then we don't know where. So it's, it's working process.
Cause it does change every day.
Yeah.
I guess it changes and then we can't even put it up on the screen because then we move all the containers. So one day it can be here, but the next day it's.
Yeah, I, I know. I get the struggle.
Maybe we'll make a list of what.
Yeah, we can definitely ask the person working the register because they are the ones that put it together too. And they'll know. And we do have like vegetarian nuggets. And you might think that they might be chicken because they look like chicken, but you can ask and they'll, you know.
Okay.
By now, it's a, a lot of students know it, but it's at the salad bar. So they actually know directly, oh yeah, that's the chicken nuggets or the veggie nuggets or.
Okay. And then my last question, this is like kind of purely selfish, but are you guys considering like adding soy milk or soy yogurt?
So it's a, so it's a great question. We are, I do feel like the regulations that guide us are a little bit delayed in what this population wants. So we do have access to lactaid, which might not be, that's not for you. So we can look into soy options. It might not be available through our, our standard vendors, but the regulations don't force us to have it available. So it's kind of one of those things that we, we're compliant to not, but we might not be satisfying the, the population need. So we can definitely look into that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Superintendent.
I just want to thank Sarah and everyone from Project Bread. We love our partnership. So it's fantastic. It's been game-changing for the district and Sarah's work as well and her team. Thank you so much. Since Sarah came on, I know Sarah's main goal is to make sure that we're cooking onsite as much as possible. And Sarah's been working tirelessly to make sure that we can work with Paul Hines and with the support of the school committee and the mayor to make sure that as much as possible, we're cooking onsite and as fresh as possible. The salad bars have been fantastic and I know we'll be doing some more work this summer, hopefully to expand onsite cooking, which is great. And so Sarah, I do just want to thank you and your team for making that possible and making breakfast and lunch for our students so much better in the district. And, and then of course, with the governor's support on the free lunches and again, with the assistance of Project Bread, it's been really a game changer, as you said. So we really appreciate that and everyone's work in this area. So thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Erin, you need a little energy food before you start?
I'll always take a seasoning.
Okay, so next on the agenda, we have the Student Opportunity Act Plan update by Ms. Parkins.
Thank you very much. I will be brief. I just wanted to update you on where we are so far in terms of what we've done to engage our stakeholders. So as you know, we presented an update on, or information on the Student Opportunity Act at a meeting a few weeks back. And so one of the requirements of the plan was to engage stakeholders. And so we have met with the principals, we met with the high school principals on February 6th and the elementary and middle school principals on February 1st. We had a meeting for educators on February 15th. We had a joint meeting of our EL and Special Education Parent Advisory Councils on February 29th. That was virtual. And we most recently had a public meeting on March 6th and that was also virtual. In addition, we have sent out a survey. So we. In addition, we have sent out a survey. So we sent out a survey to our educators and also to our parents. Um, it's still active right now, so we're still collecting feedback. So if anyone hasn't had an opportunity to fill it out, please go online and fill it out. Linked in the survey is the presentation that we did for all of our different, um, stakeholder groups, and, um, also the data. The disparity data is also linked in the survey. So, uh, families and parents can, guardians can feel free to go on and fill that out. So far, we've had about 100 staff complete the survey and about 161 parents, so we'll send it out again. Um, right now, uh, we'll, we'll leave that open probably for about another week or so, and then we'll have to close it because on March 20th, we will present to you the final plan and, um, or the, the draft of the final plan for your questions, approval, and vote. Um, and we will then have to submit that plan on April 1st. So the other piece that I just wanted to mention is, the last time that we met, we did not have the Chapter 70 increase number, and so we do now have that. So, um, it is, Mr. Malini is here and can give that to you. Um, it, it's, it's not very much. So, just something to keep in mind as we put together this plan.
As a matter of fact, we had a meeting today with, uh, John Keenan's office, John Keenan, uh, his office, Bruce Ayers, Ron Mariano, and the four highest, uh, people in the finance department for, um, the Mass DZ, uh, as well as Chris Walker, myself, and, um, Eric Mason, uh, to basically go over, uh, the reasons that City of Quincy is not getting much of a increase. Uh, basically it comes down to the formula that they use and, uh, the equalized value is the biggest thing that's driving it, the value of the property in Quincy and the income that's in Quincy. Uh, so they've, on their formula, we've got too much aid this year based on last year's numbers, so we're getting the minimum, which is $30 per student or $293,970. So without funding, we're still required to come up with a three-year plan for Student Opportunity Act. Because as Erin mentioned before, uh, they say it's not a grant, there's no specific money entitled to it. You have to assume that all the money that comes in in Chapter 70 is available to use towards this purpose. So we'll be redirecting funds, uh, instead of expending new funds.
So just to, that's why where we are, when we presented, we have presented this as a plan and not necessarily based on funding. So we're looking at disparity data and what are potentially no-cost, low-cost ways, currently existing things that we can beef up, enhance, but we just obviously want to make that clear that this is a plan and it's not, we're, we're not really focused on, you know, we, we need to, obviously the funding is important, but it's, I think it's more about what we're currently doing that, you know, we can focus on to create the, help for mediate the disparities.
Hey, if you don't mind, you opened the door a little bit, Jim. I know it's not a budget meeting, um, but, um, maybe a little bit of further clarification for the edification of the public tuning in. I don't know if you remember off the top of your head, but what the total local aid is to Quincy, to Lynn, to Brockton, a few of the cities, and a few of the suburban communities. It's astonishing.
I, I don't have those numbers here, but I can tell you, um, they're all significantly higher. They're, um, the Chapter 70 money for, for those groups fund somewhere between 80, 60 is the lowest, up to 80 to 90% of the budget for the schools, as well as having other local aid that goes to them. So Quincy is just getting around 25% of its funding, I believe, through the state, uh, which is remarkably low for when you look at the, uh, 10 largest communities and then expand it to the 20th largest communities. We are at the bottom of, of the rung for percentage of our money that comes to us in state funding. It's very, very low, and it's, all is made up on, by basically the city taxpayers.
Yeah, so the better job we do, the more we're punished. Uh, it's, it's, it's very disturbing. Uh, and, and of course, uh, I mean, I, I probably should save it for, for the budget meetings coming up. We'll, we'll definitely put a, a kind of a sheet together for everyone so people understand fully, uh, both the Chapter 70 and restricted aid. It's, you know, we're in the 40s, uh, Brockton's over 200 million, Lynn's over 200 million. Um, I think places like Wells are getting more in, uh, school aid than the City of Quincy. It's remarkable to me. And it, what, what's also disturbing is that it gets into the whole, um, agencies talking to each other. We're, we are not only meeting the mandate, we're exceeding the mandate on development and housing starts, which has led to some increase in our enrollment. Uh, so communities like Quincy should be rewarded for doing the right thing. It's, uh, so the, the, the bigger screw-up you are, the more money they give you. It's, it's, it's very frustrating, so. But I'm going to leave it at that. We'll talk more at budget time.
What, what, what was our, what did we get last year?
$10 million increase.
We got a $10 million increase. Uh, that was based on, they were originally, when this SOA started, we were supposed to get a $6.3 million increase. We got nothing. It was during COVID. Then we got a $3 million and a $3.5 million, which kind of got us up to there. Um, and then based on the funding formula, there was a large infusion of cash into Chapter 70. A lot of districts did very well and got, uh, more. Uh, Quincy certainly did not top the list getting that, but, uh, we had, just through the formula, uh, we received that $10 million. And now, uh, because the equalized value of the property and the income taxes is paid in, and even including with, uh, an increase in student population, which increases our foundation budget, but the funding goes down, so that they expect the municipality to kick in more. And they did point out Quincy was probably the only district that they could think of that had an increase in student population.
Well, like you said, we'll discuss it at the budget meeting, but, um, it will fall on us and the taxpayers at some point if we want to continue to provide the services that we have now. Otherwise, we have to look at things differently. Okay, um, do you have more to, do you have more to present? Yeah, yeah, I wasn't sure if, um, Mrs. Pertios.
Thanks. Um, I appreciate how much, uh, how many meetings you had to kind of squish into that tiny, um, timetable that you had, uh, to meet with all the stakeholders. Um, those meetings with the principals, teachers, parents, um, and LPAC and CPAC, were those just presentations to those stakeholders, or was there an opportunity for, um, for them to ask questions or give you ideas or suggestions? Was it kind of two-way?
Yep, it was. So we did do a presentation similar to the presentation that we did for you all a few weeks ago, and then it was, like, it wasn't a webinar, it was, um, a regular, you know, virtual meeting. The teacher one was in person, um, and so then we did offer an opportunity at the end to answer any questions.
Okay.
Uh, you know, comments, questions. Most people typed in the chat, um, but they did, they, people asked questions.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. Um, and, uh, yeah, luckily we do a lot of the things that you're, um, you talked about putting into the plan already. Um, so fortunately for that, uh, that's going to help with that, the budget, uh, that we're, constraints that we're going to be seeing. But, um, because we're always a little proactive, I think that's going to help us. So thank you for always kind of being proactive on that. Thanks.
Everyone else okay? Well said. All right, thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, next on our list is, um, a grant for early college high schools, Superintendent.
College high school from DZ, if we could have a motion to accept the grant?
Motion to accept.
All in favor?
Has to be roll call.
Roll call.
Mr. Begoli?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Gatto?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mrs. Pertios?
Yes.
Mayor Koch?
Yes.
Next on the agenda?
Okay, uh, another grant. Quincy Public Schools was recently awarded an additional $21,160, an additional Perkins funds for CVTE programming from DZ. If I could have a motion to accept?
So move, thank you, Erin.
Mr. Begoli and Mr., and Mayor Koch, um, roll call?
Mr. Begoli?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Gatto?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mrs. Pertios?
Yes.
And Mayor Koch?
Yes.
Next on the agenda, donation of books for QPS Grade 1 students.
The Quincy Rotary Club recently made a donation of $3,108.57 to purchase a copy of Mother Bruce by Brian Higgins for each Grade 1 student in the Quincy Public Schools. If we could have a motion to accept the donation?
Motion, Mr. Gatto, second by Mrs. Pertios. Roll call?
Mr. Begoli?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Gatto?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mrs. Pertios?
Yes.
Mayor Koch?
Yes.
And thank you to the Rotary Club.
Thank you. Um, chronic absenteeism for referral to Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Subcommittee. Mr. Gatto, any, any discussion? Move that to Subcommittee. Um, safest fingerprinting for volunteers, referral to EDI Subcommittee. Any discussion? No? Okay, move it to Subcommittee. Athletic fees for referral to the Budget and Finance Subcommittee by Mayor Koch. Um, just no discussion, move it to Subcommittee. Additional business, none. Um, communications, upcoming school committee meetings, regular meetings on March 20th, April 10th, May 8th and 22nd, June 12th at 6:30 PM at Cottington Building. Upcoming Subcommittee meetings at Cottington, March 13th, Special Education at 6:00 PM, Policy at 6:45. March 20th, Athletics and Wellness at 6:00 PM prior to the regular meeting. March 27th, Teaching and Learning at 6:00 PM, Policy at 7:00 PM, and April 24th, Quarterly Budget and Finance at 6:00 PM, Teaching and Learning at 6:15 and Policy at 7:00 PM. Um, reports of Subcommittee's, Quarterly Budget and Finance from the February 7th meeting, Mayor Koch.
Yes, essentially, we had a presentation by Mr. Malini, basically saying we're right on the mark, uh, to the, this portion of the fiscal year. We did talk a little bit about the warning signs coming up for the upcoming budget, uh, but we'll get into that in future meetings.
Thank you. And Policy Subcommittee, Mr. Gatto?
Uh, we discussed the two items that we had on the agenda, uh, the night that we're removing Subcommittee, just to a vote.
Okay, very good. And Joint Special Education Policy Teaching and Learning, Mrs. Pertios.
Uh, we had a joint meeting of the Special Ed Policy and Teaching and Learning Subcommittee on February 28th. Uh, there are four items on the agenda. The first item was a presentation by Curriculum Director Michael Mariani and Point Webster Middle School Grade Science Teacher Michelle Kutter, um, on the science, on the MCAS Science, Technology, and Engineering Expanded Pilot. Um, item number two on the agenda was a presentation by Special Education Director Julie Graham and her team, um, on the Special Education Rights and Responsibilities. And, um, the third item on the agenda was a presentation by, again, by Special Education Director Julie Graham and Coordinator Jen Mary on caseloads and workloads of our related service providers. And lastly, um, on the agenda was a presentation by Ms. Wood and Ms. Wilson from the Quincy CPAC, uh, updating the school committee on their recent work and, um, collaboration with QPS and upcoming goals. Uh, and the full meeting minutes can be found on the website.
And, okay, thank you. And then the last is that, um, on the Policy Subcommittee, we're removing creating professional staff caseload guidelines from the items of the Policy Subcommittee, correct? Okay. Um, and we will not be going into executive session?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second by Mr. Begoli. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.
Thanks, everybody.